But that won't be the case throughout the evening. Good evening, everybody. Glad to see all of you and have you join together. It's been a hard few days. It's been a hard few months, but it certainly has been compounded by the events that happened last Wednesday at our nation's capital and the threats of continued danger and violence and the upcoming inauguration and the anxiety that that is producing. So I wanted to allow this forum for us to be an opportunity to be supportive of one another, to recognize even in isolation that we are not alone and that the thoughts and feelings that you might be having are shared by others and we'll close our evening tonight with a prayer rather than opening. But what I've asked a number of our parishioners to share how these events of the last week have impacted them. The thoughts that have occupied their minds and weighed heavy on their hearts. And hopefully it will resonate, you know, with all of us on one in one way or another. And so I'm going to begin with that. And if I could ask Pat Snyder, if you don't mind, you know, beginning the sharing with how the how the events in the last week have impacted you. And a reminder to everyone in the upper right hand corner of your screen, I believe there is a view and you can have speaker view, which will just be the speaker on view, or you can have the gallery view. So that's up to you how you you want to choose to do that. So Pat, you've got yourself unmuted?
Excuse me, forgot. Sorry. Okay, now I need to bring back up what I was going to say to you. Just take a second. Like everyone to whom I have talked since last Wednesday, I was stunned and horrified and disbelieving of what unfolded. And since then, I've continued to experience a lot of turmoil and worry, especially about the inauguration. But underneath it all, just profound sadness. It is a heartbreaking situation. As details of last Wednesday come out and more events like ongoing death threats have occurred since then, it all has become even more appalling and just stupefying at times for me. It just keeps getting worse. And still we have leaders insisting on lies and political games. Now today, of course, we came to impeachment. And disturbing as that is, it is very clear to me that those who behaved in violent and criminal ways on Wednesday must be held to account, all of them. It is hard to know what to say about all this. We got here through a long process and it will take a long process to return us to sanity and lawfulness, I'm afraid. Many of our leaders have betrayed us, but I think we have also not truly insisted on ethics and morality and integrity in public life for a long time. And thus, since the election, the situation has spiraled totally out of control. Recovery will be difficult, but somehow we must find a way to get on a better track as a society, as well as just politically. Somehow we need to make more room for discourse even among ourselves based on respect and efforts to understand. We need to work toward a society where the norm is honesty and justice and where lies are not accepted, especially big lies. And we must find a way as a nation to address the underlying struggles we have had. Racism and income inequality among them and move toward a just society where no one feels left out and left behind. When I am overwhelmed and troubled like now, I tend to want to see what I can do to ease this sense of helplessness in the face of the enormity of it all. What doable personal actions can I take? So in addition to thinking about what has to change with our politics nationally, I am also thinking about the difficulty we encounter every day among ourselves and how impossible it is to talk about this with anyone who we are not sure agrees with us. How can we understand each other and our problems and all find truth if we can't even talk to each other? We need to get out of our echo chambers. I know we must look at ourselves because in my own family, there is anger and division over our political situation. And some of us can't talk to others. I know I personally must do better at understanding those I disagree with, but that is a struggle at times, at least for me. The other day I was reminded of the familiar beautiful words of the prayer of St. Francis. And they seem to fit my challenge very well. You all know it. The prayer begins. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. I pray it may be so.
Thanks, Pat. And thanks for reminding us that it is social, but also personal. And that we are each a microcosm of our world and working to, you're right, there are times we most of the time where we don't, we always say, no religion and no politics. Two of the most critical things that define us as human beings and we say, oh, no, don't talk about religion and politics. We have to find ways to do that, make, talk about it, communicate that are life giving and not life threatening or life diminishing. So thanks for putting your experience and thoughts into words. And I like your phrase, we've got to get out of our echo chambers where we only hear what's in our own head over and over again. Hopefully this is an opportunity to do that right here and right now. Ramona, would you share with us the things that have been ruminating in your head and heart?
Well, there there are lots of things. Unfortunately, I tried writing them down. I just I come to an end because I can't, I can't take it in all the way and all that I have. My first reactions were just a profound sadness to see what was happening in front of me and to comprehend what it all means. But I think it has come. It has been coming for a long time. And again, I certainly, Pat, I like your, your trope about the echo chambers. We have to get out of our own echo chambers. That's certainly one of the things that we were have been in just faith have have found. It was, I just, I was, I couldn't believe what I was seeing in front of me. And I know that this has been building up for a long time. In fact, I was very afraid at the last election in 2016, that something was going to happen that would, I couldn't even imagine what it was. But clearly there is, there is a lot of there's a lot of disbelief about many things and everything that we hear, everything that we see is kind of filtered through a lot of other opinions. And it just is going, I hope, I hope certainly that we will be able at some point to talk to each other and understand how the thought processes have been going on each side. Clearly, there are things have come to a point where there are two camps and certainly if we are to make progress in the next four years or eight years or whenever, we are going to have to work very, very hard and try to come to a point where we can resolve what this is. I did just, I I've had haven't found a prayer yet that fits what I what I feel, but I was just reading something by Cornel West, who said that justice is what love looks like when it's in public. And I think that if we remember that what we really what we are really anchored by is love, love for one another, that that's, that's the most important thing that we can try and develop and pray about, or at least I know that I can.
Thanks. Thanks, Ramona. That's a beautiful statement. Justice is what love looks like in public. And some of the things that I read today from St. Francis to sales, who was in the 16th century, the divisions between Protestant and Catholics were kind of like our split today in the government. And he was seen as a bridge builder and a peacemaker. They said, if you want to win an argument, call Bishop so and so. But if you want to win a soul, call Bishop Francis, because he was, they even called him the Doctor of Love and the Apostle of Love. And just as you said, if love isn't at the center, then we won't get anywhere. And in our situation today, because of the animosities, it has to be love coupled with forgiveness that will move us out of this morass that we're in. So thanks, Ramona. Buzz, you have a, you know, military background and lived in Washington DC or were assigned there for a while. Would you share with us?
After I retired from teaching at Richmond High School, I stayed on for three more years to implement the restorative justice program there. As part of that project, I resolved a lot of fights. As might be expected, anger was the most obvious emotion connected to a fight. But invariably beneath the veneer of anger were much deeper feelings of sadness, confusion, frustration and fear. That's how I'm feeling now. I am angry. I spent 23 years of my life in the military service of this country. And I swore an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and to bear true faith and allegiance to the same. I'm angry that some who have taken the same oath have not lived up to it and honored it. I always thought that our government, for all of its flaws, was rock solid. Now I realize how fragile our democracy is. That it is held together by little more than an agreement between our elected officials that it will run according to the Constitution and its laws. There is no sheriff to step in and enforce its precepts when they are violated. I feel like I'm living in a house of cards and every day I'm waiting for the next shoe to drop. In spite of my military service, I've never really considered myself as much of a patriot. But recent events have made me realize how much I love this country and this 244 year experiment in democracy with its promise that all men are created equal and are endowed with certain unalienable rights, life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. That this is in jeopardy makes me very sad.
Thanks, Buzz, for sharing that. I think your long military service gives you a perspective that perhaps most of us don't have, not having had that that military and service, such a direct service to the country. So I can only imagine when you see some of those scenes, what that must do to you. And that word sadness is something that I think so many of us have felt these days. Gina, you've been faithful in coming on our Wednesday gatherings. And so I'm glad that you were willing to offer some your own reflections.
Thanks for asking me. I'd like everyone else. It's been a rough week and last Wednesday was a week ago today. I was, I was just shocked. I had been working on my computer, so I was streaming live the counting of the Electoral College votes and thought this was going to be finally the day that everything would be settled and we could move forward and had no idea that it was going to turn into such a horrible day. I can't get the images or the sounds out of my mind. In fact, I can't even watch the news clips that they continue to show because I find it so horrendous. It was, it was awful to see the pushing of people, the mobs, the breaking of glass, the guns drawn, the shouts of horrific chants. I just couldn't believe that it was happening. I was angry and I was sad. And I was disappointed that something so so traditional for our government transition was was being led down a very sad way. And I was also embarrassed for our country, wondering what other leaders and citizens around the world were thinking. I was scared and it reminded me a lot of 9/11. I was working in my office alone. They had shut down the building right after I got there. So I was in the office alone listening to my transistor radio that I kept in case of earthquakes. And and I listened to everything unfold that day. And here I was alone again at my home at my computer watching this. And it felt, I think, even worse being alone and not being able to share and connect with people. 9/11, I thought was horrible, but this was different because it was Americans treating Americans in such a horrible way, the violence and the disrespect. And we learned more over the next few days about how bad it really was during those hours of occupation. And that made me even angrier at these people and all the enablers who had encouraged them. I've been thinking a lot about how these people arrived at their decision to protest so forcefully. And I understand they come from so many walks of life and they're not stupid people. So but they acted with such vitriol in their voices. I heard anger and frustration and entitlement. How does this happen here? How do we stop it? Can we prevent more violence in the coming days, not just in Washington, but now across the country? And I thought it reminded me a lot of some of the horrible California wildfires we've had the last few years. We've witnessed just total devastation. And the fires seem to take on a life of their own beyond the fuel and the winds that fan the flames. And scientists have said that climate change is partially responsible for the intensity of these fires. And I think that what we saw last week was a social climate change that has created this firestorm of anger in Washington. And we're seeing more of it. You know, social media and other forms of communication can quickly spread inaccurate or extremist information. And strong calls to action can incite many people to do things they may not have felt empowered to do in the past. And while the anger and frustration are flaring so publicly right now, I believe this behavior has deep seated roots. And so I think it's going to take a long time to tamp down the incendiary actions, probably years. And it's hard to know how to make things better. I want to fix things. That is a project manager. That's what I do. But I can't fix this by myself. And for me, prayers just aren't enough. I've talked with friends and and colleagues. It's helped me listening to Zoom meetings such as our town hall last week and at Mass. But I think it's important to keep an open mind and try to understand where these folks are coming from. And if possible, it's important to respectfully listen and discuss their beliefs and share information. I think it's the only way that we can keep the doors open for changes of heart and mind. And I have to remember to never lose faith in the innate goodness of most Americans and our global citizens around the world. That's what I've been thinking about.
Thanks very much, Gina. I, your image of the California wildfires resonated immediately and how they are out of control. And how this is and to describe it as a social climate change, yes, it does feel like that. And how can we get beyond the impasse and get ever to a point of dialogue? As you say, we need to understand, try to understand one another. But if you don't have peace and calm enough to dialogue or even the forum in which to do that, then how can you get beyond the prejudgments and the misjudgments of one another? Again, thank you. Dennis Rowland, you said that you would be willing to share some of the things that have been going on for you inside.
Well, Father, you know, as everybody else has said, this is a very troubling time. I spent almost four years in Washington DC when I was serving in the Coast Guard. And during that time, the Vietnam demonstrations were going on. Of course, as a Coast Guard officer, I wasn't able to participate, but I was able to volunteer with the first aid because with my ski patrol training, I was valuable there. And for the most part, those were just demonstrations and nonviolent people standing up for what they believed. And that's the way it should work. I also thought back to 2005, when we took a family trip to DC. And we're fortunate enough to work with our congressman and get tickets to the Senate Gallery, which was when we were in, was on a roll call vote. So we got to see McCain, Einstein, Hillary, Kennedy, you know, Kerry, all walking up to make their vote. It was really quite a special time. And just the reverence that, you know, you feel when you were in the Capitol for all the history and all the people that have tried their best to make this experiment work. You know, it just made my sadness all the worse. And, you know, I really am troubled that I think our system of government is maybe not necessarily under attack, but failing. As you know, I'm a CPA. So one of the tenants of doing, of building a business system is segregation of duties. Things like the person that writes the check doesn't also sign them, you know, things that you expect one person might have by error or design do something wrong, but that their compatriot working for the company, the company's good, would call them on it. But, you know, our founders had a similar system in mind. Well, we, they called it checks and balances with legislative, executive and judicial branches and looking over each other's shoulders. But that presupposes goodwill and good intentions of everybody involved. And I fear that that reliance on everyone's goodwill and good intentions is broken. So I fear for our government in that regard. And then, as others have said, you know, I really don't fully appreciate the level of grievances that have brought not just the people that were in the mob and maybe some of them getting carried away by mob mentality, but the millions and millions of people that voted for a ticket that perpetuated this split and name calling and everything else. You know, that and I'm trying to understand the grievances that that caused people to demonstrate riot, but also to vote as they did, you know, and I'm sure there's some with that are doing so because of concern for immigration, you know, income and job security. Maybe, maybe some racial bigotry in there. But I don't know. And it's very difficult to talk with people to understand what their grievances are that brought them to vote as they did or to act as they did. The you know, we're in a country now of we and they. There is no we acting in concert to address each other's grievances and issues. You know, and, and, you know, certainly listening to Fox TV or MSNBC is not going to give you a good understanding of those grievances. And until we can really talk with our brothers and sisters, understand their grievances, can we start to act? But with the name calling and the division, we're not even thinking about addressing those grievances. You know, and maybe some of them shouldn't be addressed, but at least the other side has a right to understand our thinking. So I am deeply concerned, not only for the violence and destruction of our Capitol, really the citadel of democracy, but also of the course of our society and our system of government.
Thanks, Dennis, for some very insightful reflections. When you spoke about being in DC and you use the word reverence for for that city and those buildings, I've only been there a couple of times, but I'm a, I'm I get, I cringe when I see graffiti and litter. So to see the destruction that was going on to the that was going on to those sacred spaces for us as part of our American religion, you know, the temple of freedom and democracy. You know, earlier Gina said about not wanting to see those images and not being able to even look at them again, you know, because they are so painful. And that's the building. But you bring up the reality that America is a people and we don't sense ourselves as one nation under God, indivisible. And how are we going to get back to that point? How are we going to be able to do what you suggest is to listen to what are those grievances that others have? Again, we need forums to do that. So thanks, Dennis. Mary Olwen, would you offer your reflections?
Yes, thank you for asking me to put my thoughts together about this. It was a helpful exercise. The events at the Capitol last Wednesday, as we are all saying, were most disturbing. There have been many other events at the Capitol in the course of our history that have been disturbing and laid some of the groundwork for what we saw on TV a week ago. These include votes to maintain slavery, repeated voting down of anti-lynching laws, immigration legislated by race, a vote to imprison citizens simply because they were Japanese Americans, laws that discriminate against Native Americans, Jews, and African Americans, and a lack of will to legislate for voting rights, women's rights, homosexuals' rights, the rights of the disabled. That's not the whole list, but you get the idea. All of those past offenses culminated last Wednesday in an event that shook our confidence in our democracy. That people in a crowd wore sweatshirts that said Camp Auschwitz and Six MNE, which stands for Six Million Is Not Enough, shows how much hatred underlies the formation of this nation. It displayed itself a week ago and that display reminds us of the fragility of what we thought was so secure. Through all our checkered history, one of the things we could reliably count on was the peaceful transfer of power. The image of an American is of a good sport. When you lose, you shake hands while congratulating the winner. More than half of the elections that have taken place in my lifetime have not resulted in my choice of leadership. But I accepted the will of the voters and I consoled myself with the fact that I live in a nation that knows how to transfer power peaceably and cooperatively for the good of the people. And that idea provides a sense of security. Provided. Many of you know that I'm a child psychiatrist. Children need a sense of security and stability within their family in order to grow up feeling confident in handling the ways of the world. Citizens of a nation need confidence that their representatives will respect the Constitution, that election results will be accepted, laws will be followed, traditions will be honored. Without that, our security and stability are at risk, as we witnessed last week. If you are feeling threatened or stressed by the attack on the Capitol, you're not alone. I think all of us this evening would acknowledge that we feel stressed and added that to all the other stressors, the pandemic, risk of death, job loss, people waiting in lines at food banks, schools functioning online, separation of family and friends, climate change, fires and drought. The assault last week tore away at the security we all grew up having in our government. It was a reminder that we all must be vigilant to protect what is in fact fragile entity, our democracy.
Thanks, Mary. I think we've probably all taken our government for granted over the years. And as you describe it, when you lose that sense of security and stability that we've come to rely on, it really shakes the whole foundation of everything else. We are political people. There's no getting around that. And we count on those processes. And when those processes are damaged and/or even, you know, destroyed, given the impression that they could be destroyed, then yes, that puts us on shaky ground. So thanks for giving us that reflection. Carl Piester, you've you're familiar with with struggle. And I remember you telling me about when you were chancellor at UC Santa Clara student protests and you were at Cal Berkeley for many years and probably you know, saw some of those years of social and civil unrest. What has been your reflection in light of last week and what's been unfolding?
Thank you, John. Reflecting on the attack on the Capitol on January 6th, I have two concerns that I would like to share. First, how could this have happened in our country? And second, how does it reflect the implicit or explicit racism in our culture? Both sides of my ancestral roots are German. I've lived in Germany twice for a period of a year and a half and learned that ordinary German people are no different from ordinary Americans. They have families, they have jobs. German culture's given the world music and science. The Queen Victoria, a consort, Prince Albert. Coincidentally, excuse me. And yet, we seem to think that, well, this happened in Germany once, but not in our country. By coincidence, an article in the East Bay Times today quoted Erwin Chemerinsky, the dean of Berkeley Law, and I quote from that article. He said, "I don't think there's any inherent difference between people in the United States and people who were in Germany and enabled the Nazis," end of quote. Yet in 1938, in Munich, German people allowed the growing Nazi party to carry out what was known as Kristallnacht. That destroyed, led to the destruction of Jewish businesses and the death of countless German Jews. This nascent coup, or putsch in German, led to the Nazi takeover of the government and the death subsequently of millions of Jews. How could we fail to be concerned about the growing number of armed or unarmed Americans who seem to have no faith in our Constitution or our government? On January 6th, we witnessed an attempted coup, but happily failed. But I don't think it'll be the last attempt. Nor is it over in Germany even. With the rise of a new fascist political party, the AfD, Alternative für Deutschland, the Alternative for Germany, ironically, both Germany and America are nominally Christian countries. My second concern is the existence of explicit and implicit racism in our society and how it's been employed to strengthen a political position. Just as Jews were used as scapegoats by the Nazis, our culture has permitted the same misfortune to burden the lives of both recent immigrants and American citizens who happen to have either black or brown skins. This difficulty is captured by the phrase, quote, "living while black or brown." Finally, contemplate what might have happened had the mob of January 6th been predominantly black instead of white. As Father John wrote in the announcement of this evening's program, quote, "Without critical thought and without an inner moral compass, we can't face reality as it is and respond to it from a higher place in our better selves," end of quote. I urge that we all strive to keep our compasses pointing to the two great commandments. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl, for taking the time and probing deeper into the root causes of these issues. Armed citizens frighten me. I've never, I don't think I've ever held a gun in my hands. I don't understand. It's never been a part of my family or culture. We weren't hunters in Toledo. And I don't understand that the whole concept and our refusal as a country to address the presence of weapons that have nothing to do with hunting. And just to think that a few weeks ago, when armed citizens went into the Michigan government building unencumbered, and that's, I think that's a real serious issue that we eventually have to deal with. And then you bring up the critical issue of racism, which is underlying so much of the struggles and problems that we have in this country and that fire has been fueled in the last four years in ways that are unimaginable and that we hadn't seen before. The good news, we can look to Georgia and the election of the senators, an African-American and Jewish-American, and find hope. Find hope in that. So again, thank you, Carl. Marlene Matsvoko, I know that these things have been very hard on you. Would you offer your reflection, please?
Sure. Thank you, Father John. I'll be honest, I spent most of last Wednesday in tears. Watched what was unfolding in real time became more than disbelief, shock and outrage. It was grief. It was the kind of grief that comes in waves when processing loss. The grief just settled deeper as evening fell over Washington. It was in that twilight that grief became the loss I felt after 9/11 of things, of people, of places that would never be the same. My mind drifted back to the first time I spent time in DC. I was a junior in high school, mesmerized by the solemnity and the power of it all. And then remembering the last time I spent a lot of time in DC, which was in 2006, taking Patrick on his first trip to Washington, doing the high school civics field trip as a tour guest of Ellen Taushner's office. I could still see and feel the worn marble steps of the Capitol, my footing unstable in the unevenness as I climbed those steps. I could see myself sitting in the upper gallery of those chambers, looking down in awe at our elected officials. I wouldn't dream of trying to scale the walls or running onto the congressional floor. And in viewing the aftermath, the vandalism, the brokenness, all I could do was cry. How could people do this? Our common ground, our taxes, our hope, built these buildings and elected these people. What was the point of this destruction? As many of you have said, I've often taken our democracy for granted. I believe that the checks and balances were foolproof. I always believed that things bend right, bend left, but settle in the middle. I have associates, friends and family on both sides of the politic. And now, not so sure. I cry because I am polarized by this unimaginable event. My grief is truly from loss. I'm losing once beloved people connections because my belief in what I see as moral, ethical, and just directly conflicts with theirs. I know some of these folks, perhaps even some of this community, will never understand the side that I fall on. I cry because I don't know how to reconcile this. I cry in my struggle to forgive. I cry because my moral center is having a really hard time finding common ground with some, much less loving them as Jesus asked of me. So I have to pray that our Lord will walk alongside all of us, hold our fragile, angry, or hateful hearts, and bring us all to some healing.
Thanks, Marlene. As a visitor to those buildings and, as you say, sitting in that gallery and looking down with awe and admiration at the activities that go on there. And then to have seen the scenes last week of our elected officials cowering under the benches and frightened for their lives. The contrast there. Your response of tears probably is the only response one could have found. So thanks for sharing those with us. you have a reflection that you wanted to share?
Thank you to everybody who's spoken so far. Such powerful, moving words and so true. A couple of things struck me. Four years ago, almost four years ago, I was in Washington DC for the Women's March. I just felt very strongly that something had happened that I needed to at least physically be a presence, and a peaceful presence against. They, from where we were going to meet as a group to where we were then going to end up, the park service or whomever set up the path left us a path of about eight feet wide. There were so many of us there that we ended up having to just make our way via streets, parks, however we could to get to the endpoint because they really thought there were just going to be a few of us. But the crowd was peaceful. They were kind. They shared snacks. When it got tight because there were so many of us in spaces, they lifted each other up on the fences to have a place to sit. When people were fainting because there were just too many people, medical students came out of nowhere and started helping people. It was just a kind, friendly crowd. And the message was pretty much that we're here because we have a common voice and we want to share it. What I found so troubling during this time, as Pat said, about families being torn over this, is that the division hasn't just been political values, it's taken us down to health. These divisions have divided people as to whether or not These divisions have divided people as to whether or not to wear a mask. We saw it in the chambers where the people were hiding for their lives and people brought masks with them and were giving them out to others who maybe had forgotten. And people refused to wear them. And now members of the House and Senate have COVID because other members stood there and refused to take a mask and put it on. That's the part I don't understand. How do we get to a point where it's just not about disagreeing anymore, but down to every single piece of life, decisions, every factor of people's lives? I don't understand how we've come to that. I have a family member who opposite political views of mine, I can't even talk to him. It's terrible. And I am so torn that this is where our country is. And I hope and pray that we can get to a point of healing because it's horrible. It's a terrible spot to be. And thank you, Carl, for reminding us of how easily Kristallnacht began and then all the killing of the Jewish people during World War II and how some people knew it was wrong, they knew something was happening, but six million people still were killed. And again, I pray that we can get to a better spot as humans, that love can be a piece of it, the forgiveness can be a piece of it and healing.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. The contrast between the march in Washington that you took part in and the mob scene that we saw on Wednesday is just a dramatic contrast that shouldn't be. Our nation's capital should be a gathering place for all people in safety and expressing, you know, what's important to us and not a place of fear and death. I'm going to thank all of you who took time to reflect and articulate because I think the rest of us can resonate with so many of the expressions that you gave to us. And I want to close tonight with a prayer. And hear some of the words of religious leaders throughout our country, words that they have offered and for hope and and for healing. So if you can give me one moment. Thank you. I'll ask Rita Mitchell if she would begin our prayer for us. Don't forget to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Okay.
Those who are going to be speaking and offering the prayer.
Okay, let us just take a deep breath and remind ourselves that we're always in the presence of God. As people of faith, we respond in prayer. Eight o'clock. Regardless of our political persuasion, we're all probably troubled and disheartened when a group of insurrectionists incited by the US president stormed the Capitol building. They disrupted the work of legislators carrying out their constitutional duty to certify the results of a free and fair election. Warnings of continued violence threaten our safety and freedom and our democracy. Catholic leaders of all political persuasions denounced the violent overtaking of the Capitol. Let us now listen to the words of wisdom and prayers for healing from several faith leaders. From Archbishop Gomez of LA, the peaceful transition of power is one of the hallmarks of this great nation. In this troubling moment, we must recommit ourselves to the values and principles of our democracy and come together as one nation under God. I entrust all of us to the heart of the Blessed Virgin Mary. May she guide us in the ways of peace and obtain for us wisdom and the grace of a true patriotism and love of country.
From Archbishop William Laurie of Baltimore, our hearts are heavy as we witness the shocking and unlawful protests occurring in our nation's capital. We fervently pray for peace and for God's protection over our country, our lawmakers and all those in harm's way this terrible day. May peace-loving Americans of goodwill throughout the United States come together to engender peace, reconciliation and healing in our wonderful and broken nation, which remains and must always be one under God.
From Bishop Mary Ann Booty of Episcopal Diocese of Washington, God of ages, in your sight nations rise and fall and pass through times of peril. Now, when our land is troubled, be near to judge and to save. May leaders be led by your wisdom. May they search for your will and see it clearly. In any way that we have turned from your ways, help us to reverse them. Give us your light and truth to guide us. This we pray in your holy name.
From Bishop Michael Curry, the presiding bishop of the Episcopal Church, the events at our Capitol are deeply disturbing. This threatens the integrity of our democracy, the national security of our nation, the continuity of government and the lives and safety of our legislators, their staffs, law enforcement and all who work in the Capitol. On this day and at this moment, we pray for our nation. We ask God to heal us, to show us the way to healing, to show us the way to be one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Now, as our Savior Christ has taught us, we are bold to say, our Father, who art in heaven, be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
And now a prayer of hope for our incoming leaders. Good and gracious God, we ask you to restore dignity, honor and righteousness to the office of the United States President. Our hope is in you. We pray that you will give President-elect Biden and Vice President-elect Harris the wisdom of Solomon and the courage of David as they seek to lead our country. May they listen to you and seek your will for the good of the nation. They have promised equality for all and to root out racism. Help them to be successful as they seek justice and protection for the oppressed and vulnerable. Unite us and heal our nation, both of the coronavirus and the contagion of angry and hateful words. May we listen to one another and listen most of all to you. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen.